First order of business is ZV 4608. Huh? Oh, yeah, we've got to approve the minutes first. Everybody get a chance to peruse the minutes?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve?
I'm looking at motion to approve minutes from last meeting.
Got a motion? We got a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Looks like the minutes sailed through. Okay, let's get back to ZV 4608. At 8880 New Jessup Highway. Consider a request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 704.4 to allow for encroachments into the side and rear yard setbacks for detached storage shed. The 1.4 acre property is zoned forest agricultural and is located at 8880 New Jessup Highway, parcel ID 03-19897. Wayne and Kathy Stewart owners and applicants. And I'm ready to hear from staff regarding said appeal or application.
Hi, good morning. Board of Appeals members, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZV 4608, variance at 8880 New Jessup Highway. On this map, this is New Jessup Highway heading north. This is on the far northern end of the county, not too far from the Wayne County line. This is Zuda Branch Road right here. And this is the property where the star is located. So they do have the railroad that runs right behind them in between their property and Old Jessup. So they are requesting a variance to Glen County ordinance section 704.4, which is in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District section, to allow encroachments into the side and rear yard setbacks. They have placed a detached storage shed garage on the property. They did place the property, or the building approximately three feet from the rear and three feet from their side property lines. And the required setbacks for the rear and the side in the zoning district is seven feet. So the applicants did place the perm, or place the building, excuse me, on the, on the property without getting a building permit. I know they submitted a letter that was in your packet that they did talk to a number of different contractors and they stated they were not aware that they needed to have a permit and also not aware that they had setbacks for that particular building. So the county did receive a complaint about the building being placed on the property. We received that complaint on January 15th of 2021. The complaint stated that there was a building going in along the fence line and there were questions about whether that was permitted and in compliance. So our county building division staff went out and did an inspection on January 19th of 2021 and did find that the building had been placed there without a permit and appeared to be in violation of the setbacks. The property owner was notified and they did apply for a variance on January 22nd. And as I mentioned, they, they stated they were not aware of the requirements for this particular building. They are new, newly relocated to the area, so they were unfamiliar with the county requirements. So here's a survey of the property. There is an existing single-family home on the property. Access is off of Highway 341. And then this is the building that they recently placed just in this back corner here. So here's some photos of the site. These are taken from Highway 341 looking into the property. So there are some other outbuildings on the property. This larger garage is, shed is the new one that is the subject of this particular variance. And here's some close-up shots that were supplied by the applicant to show where it is. Approximately at the property line, the fence line is along the property line. It's what applicants have stated. And then this photo is taken from, from Old Jessup looking towards the rear of the property. So just, there is that railroad track, you know, buffer really between the property and Old Jessup. So under a zoning ordinance section 1005.3, these are your standards that you review. These are also in your staff report in order to grant a variance. So these are your possible motions to approve the encroachments into the side or your setbacks, to approve with conditions, to deny the variance, or you can also postpone or defer to another date if you want some additional information. So SAS recommendation is denial of this variance. Looking at the different standards in terms of hardship, this was a self-imposed and so the staff is recommending denial of this particular variance. But I believe the applicants are, are here this, yeah, this morning. So they're happy to answer any questions and I'll answer questions as well.
Anybody got any questions for staff? I got one, the survey there, that's not actually, that looks like me, me a survey that was done years ago and somebody just drew the, so you don't really actually know where the, how do you know it's three feet off of property line?
The applicant stated that it was three feet, but yeah, correct, that this was drawn in on an older survey. So there was not a new survey submitted with actually placing the structure on the property.
To me, the picture looked like it's a lot closer. But I'm just speculating.
Sure, yeah.
Like you probably are too.
Yeah, and yes, the applicants had said so, and they, they may be elaborate a little bit more. The fence, I believe he said the fence line was on the property, but it might be over a little bit. So I know they had said it was three feet.
Okay.
How about, how about the building next to it? Is it, is it within the setback? The little, the smaller building?
Yeah, the smaller one. Let me find that photo. I just had it.
The pictures, the pictures don't show it. That little building to the left of it.
Yeah, you know, the photo, yeah, it's kind of hard to see, but I know when I, because I took this photo from Old Jessup, so kind of going through the trees. It looked like it was pulled off the rear setbacks. So it definitely would comply with the side setbacks. And it did look like it was pulled much further into the center of the property from, not the center, but you know, pulled off the rear property line. So it did not appear to me that it, that there were any violations. So it looks like this is the only building that is currently in violation.
Okay, thank you.
Does the railroad have, the rear is the one thing, railroad's got more power than the Pope. And where, where, where do we stand with the railroad standpoint for being in the rear setbacks?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, they, let me see if I can find, let me go back to the survey. I mean, as long as it's not encroaching into their railroad right-of-way, there, there should not be an issue. They, I believe they would have been sent, I'll have to check our, our list of who was noticed. Because we've noticed within 200 feet and I'm not sure if we, if we would have captured the railroad. I mean, that's adjacent, so I'm not sure if they, but you know, would have gone to a corporate office. I'm not sure if we would have heard, you know, from them. But as long as it's not encroaching in the right-of-way, because it is still on their property. So I don't anticipate there would be issues. But if that's something that you all would like us to check further on, you know, we can definitely do that.
I mean, is there, there's anything that even says that the fence is on their property?
Uh, no, I have not received anything that confirms that. The applicants, you know, may have something that hasn't been submitted.
Okay. All right, any more questions for staff? Okay, I guess we're ready. Thank you, ma'am. I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant. If you could step to the podium there and put, give us your name and your relationship to this endeavor. We'll all be better for it.
My name's Wayne Stewart. I'm the owner of the property. This is nobody's fault but mine. You know, I'm not blaming anybody for it. I made a mistake. We moved here for the reasons that you've read. And I really am a personal person and you know more about me than most people do on what I wrote in the statement. And this was done to get my wife here to live with our, see our grandchildren. Her health is not great and my mother lives with me too. And the hardship is that I'm on retirement and it took everything I had to get my family here and do what I did to survive off income. And so it is my fault.
Right, so, is that it?
That's all. I don't know what to say, I'm just being honest with you.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
I have a question. Excuse me. I noticed that you talked to three different contractors. And, and Mr. Carver might can answer this too. Are these contractors licensed with the state?
Well, I know that Mr. Carroll built my daughter's house over on, what is it, Oak Island or whatever it is. He gave me a price or was looking at building a garage, which I couldn't afford. Mr. Foster, which has passed, he'd come over and was looking at putting rock down for me at that same area and never said a word. And then the guy that poured the concrete, it was never mentioned, I asked. And that's, that's what I base my opinion upon.
Okay. Mr. Carver, have you got something that you'd like to add to this?
Dave Carver, Building Department. You all know Mike Carroll's my brother-in-law and he does know that he's required to have a permit.
Oh, this is Mike Carroll, not?
Mike Carroll? Well, it's Carroll Coastal Home? Yeah.
But he didn't build it.
So, so Mr. Carroll did not build this?
No, he come out and looked at it. I asked, I was trying to find a contractor that I could get a price on building a garage.
Right.
So my son-in-law and daughter recommended him. Well, he come out and I showed him where I wanted to place it. And I told him I wanted to put as close to the fence as I could. And, you know, he never, we never talked about the distance of the fence. He said, "You might have to get a permit," but that's all that was said that day.
Okay. So he, he didn't say, he didn't say anything about setback either? Okay.
No, because that property is, there's not many dry areas on it. It's almost swampland. We didn't know that when we bought it, because we bought it offline to move down here.
So who actually built this, this piece?
It was Cardinal, it was a place I didn't use, Jessup. I can't remember the name, I should have brought the receipt. They put the building up and then the contractor, the last name on there is the guy that did the concrete work, Mike something Smooth Concrete.
Mike Smith?
I think so. I can't remember, sir.
I do have one question about the building itself. Is it a stick-built?
No, sir.
Building, is it like one of those pre-engineered things that you bought from like somewhere where they sell the portable buildings? It was just assembled, started pre-engineered, just assembled on the slab that's there?
Yes, sir.
So it's a portable building that's not portable?
Well, it's anchored down pretty well and it's, I don't, I guess, I don't know what to say, sir.
Is this, is the slab the same size as the building?
Yes, sir.
So I would imagine that if, if you poured another three or four feet of concrete to the right and to the, to the forward, to the front, it'd be difficult to move it as it stands. How big is it?
It's 24 by 36 by 12 foot.
I don't think I have any more questions of the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, I guess there aren't any public comments or anything from staff.
Mr. Chairman, if you could open up the public hearing?
Public hearings open.
Okay, I'm the adjoining property owner.
Oh, great. Oh, stay, set up to the podium and give us your name.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come here and speak today.
Sure.
I'm the adjoining property owner to where this building's located.
Yes, you need to state your name.
My name is Don Woods. I'm the adjoining property owner.
Right.
And I may be a little short-winded. I've been in automobile accidents, so I'm going to try to get through this relatively quick.
Good, sorry to hear it.
I do have some opposition, the building being that close to the property line. And I feel like that it may cause problems down the road with that property. It being that close, whether I develop it or I sell it and it was developed under someone else. There is setback laws in Glen County. And I've abid, I have abided by those laws in the past. And most counties within the United States have a setback law. And that I feel that we should be recognized and do our homework and investigate before we put buildings that close to a property line. With that said, I feel that the property, the building structure being that close to the property line, cleaning, diverting the water off of the roof over on that property, because that is a low corner back there.
Mm-hmm.
And my, my request is for it to be, to be moved over or to look at other options to leave the building there. If the property is, the property is sellable, my property is sellable.
Right.
So, and I'm not here to, to propagate that idea, but it is sellable. But my concerns are with it being that close to the line. I think it would, would cause an issue for either myself in development or another party in development if it were to be sold.
But, but you know, you know the fence is on his property, I guess?
Oh, I'm aware of that.
You know the fence is on his property then?
I have the.
Is it on the property line or is it on his property or is it? You see what we're asking? Is it right on the line?
My sister and brother-in-law own the property that he purchased. And the gentleman that put the fence down is sitting here today.
Uh-huh. Oh.
I, I cannot stand here and give you an honest, an honest answer whether it's dead on it or a few inches off of it, because I didn't, I didn't, I don't know.
But you know it's not on your property.
It's not on mine to the best of my knowledge. And I don't think that my brother-in-law would have ever have put it on mine to start with, because he's a pretty smart fellow and he's not going to violate county ordinances either.
Where y'all locate the pins then, I guess, or whoever that is.
Pardon?
Whoever, the person that put the, you say the person that put the fence in is here?
He's not here, my, the person that lived at the property is sitting right here, that sold the properties to this gentleman.
Uh-huh, okay. All right. Well, you mentioned either move it or any, or other recommendations. Do you have any recommendations as to what you would like to see done? Like you mentioned the drainage is or something, maybe we could address that.
You know, if he can get there and, and move the building over, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. You can pour additional concrete and break the anchors loose, move the building to the left. I don't have a problem with that.
But that would leave the slab there, but I guess that's okay too.
You can saw that slab off, take a floor saw and saw that slab off. As far as that building being moved, I'm in that, I've done that kind of work for 30 years and that building can be sat over.
Yeah, I wondered about why you can't just hook a bulldozer to it and pull a whole damn thing up.
Well, I'm not going to get into the logistics of that in here, but to, and not diverting your question, but you know, it can be done.
Well, it looks like to me that it's a conflict with the other building.
I can't, I can't rightly answer that. I haven't been there and done any type of measurement to see if the other building keeps this building from being moved over or, or anything like that, you know? I'm just stating if there was room, I feel that it could be moved over. I don't know.
Right. I understand. All right. Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. Thank y'all for hearing me.
Could I ask a question? Wait a minute, y'all got any questions?
Yes, sir.
Could you get back up here? We got, somebody may have some questions. I thought everybody asked.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
I fully recognize it's not your responsibility, but I'm just trying to understand the whole process of it. And I don't know if it may be just a little bit out of purview of just the question of a variance. But I'm struggling with his, and now, I was struggling a little bit with it before and now I would just, if you're willing to, to share some perspective on it. Based on what you said, I understand it seems that your family own the property next to your property. You sell it to someone, so you're very well aware in terms of conversation and that kind of thing, like, oh, you sold, family sold the property, someone else that, and then somebody's building right close to your property. If you're so aware of the property based on family, I'm just, I don't, and like I said, it's not your responsibility, but why would you not have, why would you not have said something? I just bought a house. If someone was building on the property line, I would have, I would have kind of gone out there and said something. I, I just don't understand the process and I'm just trying, like I said, it may be out of purview of just what I'm supposed to do here in terms of looking at the rules and variants and stuff, but I just wanted to get an understanding out if you'd be willing to talk with me.
I will be willing to talk to you and address that question with you. Because number one, I don't live next to this gentleman. I'm not this person's keeper, obviously. That's the county of Glen and their ordinances that they have in place. And as being a respectable resident of this county, you should be full aware that there are building requirements in this county. Now, I'm not one person to pass by. I never passed by when this building was being built. I live somewhere else. So if that'll help you understand quite better than, you know?
I should have asked you, the first question was, did you live on the property?
No, I do not.
Okay, and that would have then set it all up for me.
I don't live on the property.
Okay, sorry I missed that, but yeah, and I agree with everything you said in the beginning. Thank you for answering. Appreciate it.
Before I sit.
Yeah, good. Anybody else got any questions for the neighbor?
Um, I don't, well, we said something about having to maybe saw off the concrete. I don't believe that you, concrete can go to the property line, I believe.
Sir, yeah.
So it does not, it does not have to be cut, right? Thank you.
And I don't have a problem with the concrete, just for the record.
Right. It's built on time.
I don't have a problem with that.
I got a question and actually this is probably for you, Dave. Since this is a pre-engineered, purchased, assembled-on-site type structure, I know it's kind of gray, where does this fall? And I know it has to be anchored to the ground like all portable buildings do. What defines permanent versus portable in this?
Once, once it's anchored to the foundation, then it's pretty much permanent, but it can be moved. So I guess you can take that with a grain of salt. But there's a couple of different ways and it depends on the, the building manufacturer, how they want to, want that mounted to a slab or a foundation. Some of them you require a 12-inch footing, some require 16-inch footing, some, and then you would anchor that way. Others can put it on an existing 4-inch slab and then you have to auger helicals down on the side of the concrete and strap the building down. Or you can put the building on, on crush and run or grass or whatever and auger it down. So I don't know what the footing is on this or what the slab is made up on, but if it's a slab on grade, it can stay there.
But then once the building itself is actually anchored to it, then it becomes a?
It's a permanent, yeah, pretty much. Permanent structure, just like anything else, but it can be removed.
Okay.
I got a question. Is there any redress against the builder or supplier of the building? I mean, can they just come put a building anywhere they want to? Do they, they don't have any responsibility?
They, they, they may not be licensed in, in, as a licensed builder in the state of Georgia. They're a specialty company. And so the homeowner would be required to pull the permit themselves and let them come in like a framer would come in and build something for them.
But they don't need, they don't need to, before they put the building in, they don't need to see a permit? They don't care whether, whether the owner has a permit or not?
If I was in that business, I would.
Well, it seems like, I mean, in my, in my experience, the builder is not the owner that gets the building permit, it's usually the builder.
Yes, but if they're not a licensed builder, then they cannot pull a permit.
Oh.
So if they're a specialty company, they're relying on the homeowner to pull their own permit, because the homeowner can pull their own permit on their primary residence. Now, if this wasn't their primary residence and they live somewhere else and this was a rental house or they were going to flip the house, then they would be required to have a actual general contractor.
Right, but they don't, whoever puts it in has no responsibility in this.
No, sir. They're working under the homeowner. Just like the homeowner's supposed to be the contractor, since it's their personal property. So it's just like if I hired a framer to come build me a, a doghouse. It's my responsibility if it requires a permit or not. The framer can't go get a permit.
Hmm. So if you're the property owner, you can attain the permit and hire anybody you want?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any more questions for Dave, what is up there?
I have one question for Mr. Wood, just branching out. Sounds like gutters are potential, I mean, not gutters, the, the water is part of your major concern on the runoff from the building and it is a low area. And I'm just, I'm just grasping at straws. If he was to put gutters on the building to divert the water away from your property, would that potentially pacify?
No.
Okay.
The reason I, and I'll, and I'll elaborate if you'll allow me to.
Sure.
The building being that close to the property, let's just say that I, the maintenance of that fence line, you're going to have to get in there with whatever moving around. Just say that the property growed back, the property was recently cut. The prop- property was recently cut some years ago of trees. Uh, the building being that close is gonna, is gonna present a problem in itself. Because you're not gonna get, be able to get in there and work and as, and I'll go back to this once again, if I develop it or it's sold to someone, that development, that develops it on their own, I think you probably would tend to agree with me that you wouldn't want to, to buy into a piece of property that a building is sitting right on the property line from the rip. I know I wouldn't. And that may potentially keep me from selling that piece of property because of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more public comments? Nope. Um, Stephanie, could you, uh, put the slide up that showed the buildings again?
It's fine.
That, that's as close as we got?
Uh, no, there's a, yeah, that's the closest shots we have.
Yeah. I know it's like more than eighteen inches off the property line. But, uh, what my, my concern was, I was wondering if there's, uh, if there's room, if you did what we're talking about, added the slab and slid it over and, uh, if there's even room to do that because of the other building.
Let's see. Are they going backwards here?
I don't think it is.
Skipping over some slides.
I see it right there.
Yeah, I'm not sure the distance between there, but yeah, there isn't a lot of room. Um, and, and that's something too, if you all wanna, um, you know, request a survey where they are placing that building, um, you know, on, on the site since that has not been provided, maybe that is a request that you can, you can make them and if that would help, um, with your decision.
Would that, uh, would anybody, would that help anybody if they saw a survey of where these buildings are actually sitting?
Well, I, I would have a question, the small building was, was that there when you purchased the property?
Ah, okay. How far, how far is that building from this building in question? Just, what, what's the distance in between the two buildings is what I'm asking?
Three foot?
That's all?
Looks a little further than that to me. Yeah, I can see that.
So in my, I mean, in my view, that, that that's not an option to move it to the north. If there's only three feet between the two buildings. The little building, is it on a slab? Is the slab the same exact size as that building? Okay.
I'd actually like to make a motion.
Hold on, Cliff, let's ask, w- would you entertain getting a survey done to see where it is? I, I understand, okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we defer ZV four six zero eight to a later date uh, and request that, uh, owners get a survey to show us the exact location in reference to the property line of both buildings.
Of both buildings?
Both buildings, correct.
Can I get a second on that?
I will second that.
Yes, sir, so what, um, we'll do is, uh, work with the applicant and, um, the applicant will let us know when that survey is completed and submit that to our office and at that point in time we'll, renotice it and place it on a future agenda. So I, I'm not sure if it'll take a couple of months or how long it might take, so it might be a couple of months from now. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we are still awaiting the applicant for the next agenda item. Okay, they are on their way. Um, I don't know if you want to take a quick break, um... Yeah, we're not sure exactly how far out they are right now. Yeah, Janet, we've required the applicant or an agent to be here for these, right? Okay. Um, e- either that, I mean, you also have, I mean, you can also defer it, um, but I, I know they're on their way, so, um, we're just not sure. I think it's like ten minutes, five minutes? Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't know. Yeah. So till ten, ten forty-five, we want to take a break and if they're not here by ten forty-five, then you can convene and defer it at that point. Okay, alright, thank you.
Will it be necessary for me to have to come back again since you've heard my concerns or will there even be another hearing on this?
There will be another hearing, it's all, it's up to you, that's not necessary, you know. We know, we know where you stand.
That's pretty well what I was asking, since you know where I'm standing, will it really make a difference if I come by due to the fact that the beginning?
Yeah, no, we know your position. Uh, but, you know, you know the measures you make, don't you?
Okay. Alright, just being honest.
I mean, you know, we, we may, uh...
Stephanie, he- So Stephanie, he'll get notified, right?
That is correct, yeah, we'll send out another notice, so if you, did you receive a letter about this meeting? Okay, perfect, yeah, you'll receive another notice in the mail for the next meeting date. Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, a representative for the applicant has arrived, so we can, uh, go ahead for the next agenda item.
Section, section seven oh seven to allow for encroachment into both side yard setbacks. The property is zone medium residential, which is located on Golden Alice Parkway directly to the south of the Glenn County Public Safety Complex. Partial ID oh three dash two seven three five three. Jessica Vick, Robert's Civil Engineering Agent for Kimberly Gift, Hudson Oak Brunswick LLC Owner. We'll hear from staff on this.
Morning, I'm Maurice Postal, County Planning and Zoning. Uh, as the chairman stated, the applicant is requesting a variance to the, uh, medium residential side yard setbacks for multifamily projects. The applicant is, uh, planning to construct a one hundred eighty-six unit multifamily apartment complex with townhome style units. The applicant is seeking to re, uh, variance to reduce that side setback from fifteen feet to twelve feet. Uh, the site plan for this project, which was drawn up with the proposed twelve-feet side setbacks, was approved last week by the MPC with the following condition. The site plan is only valid if the variance from medium residential side setback requirements is granted by the BOA. And if the variance is denied today, then the applicant will have to start the site plan process all over again and submit a new site plan that complies strictly with the MR setback requirements. And, uh, the stated hardship in the application is as follows. The developer would prefer the option to subdivide this property into individual townhome lots in the future. All development and design standards have been met with the exception of section seven oh seven point four three where it pertains to side yard setbacks for multifamily use. We are proposing a twelve-foot type A modified buffer along the north and south property lines. The required side yard setback for multifamily is fifteen feet. We are requesting a variance of three feet to the required side yard setback. This will allow the development to maintain a minimum of two thousand square foot lots if the property is subdivided in the future. And, uh, the minimum lot area for a townhome is two thousand square feet on the mainland. And, uh, as shown there, complying with the front and rear setbacks, but are asking for the three-foot variance to the side yard setbacks. And, uh, this is the site pan, site plan that was approved. It showed the apartment buildings built right up to the, uh, proposed twelve-foot setback on both the north and south property lines. And these are the, uh, this is the elevations, these are the townhome style apartments, which would of course maybe subdivide in the future into actual townhome lots. And, uh, the county is recommending denial based on the stated hardship not meeting the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, anybody got any questions for staff?
Yeah, dude, um, uh, typical front setbacks are like usually twenty feet, why thirty in this case? What's dictating extra?
Just multifamily, yeah, multifamily, the typical setback is fully required setback in MR is thirty feet.
Uh, I got a question, I don't know if you'd be the one to answer it or not, but since this thing butts up against, uh, Glenn County, uh, complex there, what's the county's, uh, view, oh, I know your view is denial. But what is the, uh, does the county have, uh, I'm sure they were sent, uh, notice that this was going on, that, that...
Yeah, no, this project has gone through multiple iterations over a period of years, so the county is aware and we've worked with the applicant on the various design proposals that they've had over the years. So we're not opposed to this project, but I mean, you do have the public safety stuff here and the new animal control is gonna be built right here in this corner.
Right where?
Right here. Yeah, this, yeah, right where it says vicinity map is where the new animal control is going.
Oh, I see, you're talking about the, on the big survey.
Yeah, on the public safety law, yeah. So, we're not opposed to this project in general.
But as a, that, that-
Just, as I said, just because-
Planning and zoning is.
Well, no. If they would go to the fifteen-foot setback, of course, we're, we're fine with that and we were fine with the, the site plan approval with the condition that you approved it, but because the hardship isn't meeting the requirements of the, uh, ordinance governing the BOA, we're opposed to that.
Is there a, uh, option for a twelve-foot setback, uh, or is it, is it just, uh, they just want to take all three feet and turn, and use a type A buffer?
Well, the applicant could probably explain it more, but they believe that having to build to a fifteen-foot setback, they wouldn't have enough room on the entire lot to give each townhome in the future if they do subdivide into townhomes, the two thousand square feet.
Okay, any other questions for staff? I want to hear from, um, from, uh, the applicant, uh, is that you? You step up there and, uh, give us your name and what's the big idea?
Members, my name is Brian Hunt, I'm with Robert Civil Engineering, um, the original, our, our original, um, engineer is from our Savannah office and she had issues this morning, obviously, so I do sincerely, sincerely apologize on her behalf and on Robert's Civil Engineering behalf that we had this little bit of delay, but, um, I greatly appreciate you guys staying here. Um, I did work on this project not as extensively as Jessica, so I'm hope I'm able to answer all your questions, but I think that, um, we should be able to get through this.
Okay, um, so that's your spiel there?
Yes, sir, I think it is for right now.
Thank you for that input. Uh, I, anybody got any questions? I do.
Um, Brian, y'all did, uh, or Jessica, whoever worked on this most, y'all went through several, as staff had mentioned, iterations of shrinking and stretching the buildings to, to try to get within that or setback requirements?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's correct, um, you know, for, for what I know, I know we have probably at least fifty iterations of this, trying to make this project fit, you know, obviously we have owners who are, um, they have a goal that they're trying to accomplish that would make this project feasible for, and, and, you know, financially doable for them and they went through, it was apartments, some townhomes, and the request is that as, and I guess the, the request and the hardship is that as, as it's, as a single piece of property, tax rates are much different than it is when it's subdivided and then they have to do it. Considering they're gonna do this project in phases and they're looking like a year and a half out, that I think that that makes it one hardship, but the other is, um, in, in trying to meet all of the requirements of multifamily with the setbacks and the number of units that'll be needed, that it won't, i- i- it's just, we, we lose uni, they lose units and it's just not quite possible, you know, if they lose a whole row of buildings, then financially it's not gonna be doable to be able to develop that property and then turn it into what they're trying to, what their vision is. Um, in the future, if they were to, if, which they intend on doing, if, when it's subdivided, as it sits right now, it's gonna fit perfectly within the zoning, I mean, it's gonna be, the, instead of, uh, a fifteen-yard rear setback, it would be seven-yard rear setback, so then it would be, we'd be over what the requirement is by the county, it's just the initial part, that year and a half that we're trying to look at getting through this project, um, is, is, is what's making it the most complicated, I think.
Why wouldn't it behoove you to, would you have to have it rezoned to do what you're talking about doing?
No, you don't have to, we don't have to re, have it rezoned, we would have to have it platted and, and then at that, it will, once it's platted, then the, the property is then taxed on individual lots for all one hundred and eighty-two lots that are gonna be in there. Um, and as well as, you know, it's the, the, the owners still trying to work out all the just logistics of, of this, it's, it's easier for, from, from this client's standpoint as one big project to, to develop this and then subdivide it, they're already laid out in a, in a way that it, it, uh, when, when, down the road when it comes to that they are, do plat these out individually, that the lot lines are gonna go in perfect, that the square footage is gonna be perfect, everything's gonna be in line, even it, it'd be above and beyond on the, on the, on the side yard, which would then be the rear yard setback for the, the zoning, that it would be the townhouse zoning.
So we couldn't change, you're changing zoning first?
Um, we're not asking for a change in zoning, we're just, maybe I didn't understand your question.
Well, I, I don't underst, I don't understand why one way you can have a seven-foot setback and the other way, maybe that's for staff.
Well, so, so, the, the zoning of multifamily requires that the, the, the side yard setback be fifteen foot.
Come where?
So that exact house, if, so the difference between a multifamily and a townhome is that a multifamily is that they don't own the property, it's all one big property. But on a townhome, you own that lot that it sits on and there's lot lines within it and that, that one designation then changes the setback from fifteen foot to seven foot. Just the des, but these are, they're townhomes on one single lot, so that, therefore, I guess technically it makes it multifamily.
Yeah, if I could just do it quickly, uh, as a multifamily lot, this is the front setback line, this is the rear and then these are the sides, but if they subdivide into one hundred eighty-six separate lots, I mean, this would be the front setback line of this townhome and then this would be the rear setback.
Right.
Right. So that's why he's saying the set, there would be a seven-foot rear setback when they change it to townhomes, but right now, there has to be a fifteen-foot setback along the sides of this one property.
Right now it's multifamily, but he wants to change, but if they change the townhomes, it changes the setback.
Yeah, because they would, like you said, they would have to plat, they would have to plat this whole lot, they would have to change it into one hundred eighty-six separate lots and then of course the common area for the streets and the ponds and all that.
But, but they wouldn't have to change much because he just told me it's all set up for that.
Ri- right, but yes, they would have to go through the plating process, preliminary plaque, construction plans and final plaque, where they set the individual two thousand square foot townhome lots.
Right, so, I don't understand why, so why wouldn't he just go ahead and do that?
What's that?
Why don't they just go ahead and do that? Go ahead and submit, because you got to...
Good question.
So a part of it is that if going through the initial plating process, the second that they go through the plating process, that all those then become individual lots, which are then taxed differently on each parcel is taxed versus one gigantic parcel and the tax rate is different. That is, and over the course of the next year and a half as this project's going to be developed, that's going to significantly impact what, whether or not they can proceed with this project or not. It would be, I think, a cost burden that they just, I don't think that they're going to be able to overcome on it. So I think the easiest answer is that it is developed as a single unit multifamily and that then, once this thing is developed, they can then subdivide, they can then plat it out. We're doing individual water meters in each, in each unit. So this, it's completely set up, ready to do the plating process. It's just, it's gonna, it's just, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be down the road.
So why did y'all pick 12 feet? I mean, how come you didn't adhere to the 15? You can't, you can't fit that many units when you use a 15?
Yes, sir. That's correct. When we, when we do, when we do the roads, the right-of-ways, all of the setbacks and buffers that are required, you would lose a whole row of units. And it's just not, even, so doing it that way at that point, it's, again, you know, if they lose, you know, seven units, seven, which would be 14 townhomes or more, then that's, it just makes it a non-viable project to develop that much land with that much infrastructure and roads.
So they don't have enough property to put, what they're trying to put on there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think they, I think they have enough property. I think it's just a matter of, you know, it's just asking for a three-foot variance. And in this three-foot variance, we're also going to, we're going to put in a fence, we're going to go above and beyond on trying to ensure that it's not, there's not going to be any adverse effects for the neighbors and/or the residents that's going to live inside of that. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a three-foot variance.
So the ultimate goal is to get to where, if I'm understanding this correctly, that currently right now, the developer is bearing the tax burden on the entire property.
That's exactly right.
The ultimate goal is to eventually, to build the townhomes and then plat it and then those will be sold off. So, and then at that point, it will adhere to the...
Be in compliance.
It will be in compliance at that point and theoretically at that point would need a variance.
That's exactly right.
So that's the ultimate goal is to get that. So ultimately, we're going to reach a point where it would be in compliance with what is there.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Sorry to bring you back to basic 101.
It's okay.
But I'm just having a little difficulty with the, the wordsmithing for my understanding.
Yes, sir.
As I read, it was something like 186 units, 31 buildings, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are those townhouses or is that multifamily?
So that, so that is wordsmithing. So the difference between a multifamily and a townhome is that whether or not that, that family unit owns that and if it's platted for you, so on a townhome, they have a lot and it's, you know, they got a little bit of backyard, probably a little bit of front yard and they own to the wall...
And it's a stand, excuse me, and it's a standalone?
Uh...
Or are they connected?
They could be. They're connected. Most townhomes are connected and staggered in threes or fours and depending on, you know, how it's built, they, a townhome is a minimum of three units or more that are connected by a shared wall and, but the owner owns, they own all of that. Where a multifamily, they're still same exact building, except they don't own that. It's all one big property. And that's, you know, it, it is kind of wordsmithing and it is a little, you know, it's taken me a while to kind of fully understand all of those, those finer details of it, but it's, at the end of the day, it's a townhome, but it's just all on one, one big lot. And the, and the difference between the townhome and the multifamily, whenever it goes to townhomes, the setbacks and the buffers and all of that change in accordance with it. It's the same property, same house, like it's the exact same property. If you took your house and divided it in the middle and it, the difference between the, if you, if you own, still own the whole property, that is a multifamily unit. But if you sold half of it and you put that line through your yard, then that is a townhome, yet those setbacks change, which is, I mean, I don't understand it, but it, I mean, it is what it is.
Multifamily is common area and townhome is you own the property?
Yes, sir.
Multifamily is not to go, not to go religious, but heaven to hell? And townhome is then you have property? Is that a, is that, is that a differentiation? I'm just trying to understand how...
I understand.
Right. The difference between multifamily and townhomes, the nature of the lots that the structure is set on. Like he said, this is all one lot owned by one property owner, but if you split it up into 186 different units, there'd be 186 different property owners potentially.
Well, as long as you're up there chatting, oh, what, why is there a different setback then? Why is there a different setback between multifamily and individual, if they want to develop that into, plat it into individual units?
I can't speak to why whatever commission approved this decided that, so I really can't say that.
I have a question. This is probably from Mr. Carver. And being a licensed GC, I should probably know the answer to this question, but I've never built townhomes or anything. Is the construction different, the construction regulations different for a townhome as opposed to multifamily?
Uh, no, sir. So it's got to meet the firewall standard. That's basically it.
Okay. I thought that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Hmm. And I actually have a question for the proposed alternate buffer, in the case, a couple options here, either planting or tall fence. What's the, do they have a...
They're going to, they are going to do a, they are going to do a fence. It's going to be a fence all the way around.
Okay.
How big? How tall?
I think it's a six-foot, I'd have to double check on that. That's probably, but I'm pretty sure it's a six-foot wood fence or I'm not, I'd have to double check that. I could, if you give me, I can, I can get that answer for you.
We could probably dictate that. If we approve, if we approve it, we could probably say what kind of fence.
That's right.
And are different, I notice it's a type A buffer. What are the, what are the other options? The type A is a fence on the outside of the property line and planting inside. Is that right?
Yeah, modified type A. You could do it either way, the plant on the outside and the fence on the inside or...
Vice versa.
You're right. Yeah.
Anybody got any more questions? Okay.
Actually, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, you know, been through a lot of iterations and been working with staff quite a while on this, that if approved, what are, and this is pure speculation, the odds that he's going to proceed with it? I'm assuming so because I'm assuming he's pretty well vested financially to get to this point. Because I'm going through that myself on another project.
Yes, sir. They're, they are invested pretty heavily in this project. As Marisa alluded to earlier, this is, went through several, not just iterations on this, this development, there was a point that it was, is going to be apartments and it was already, we're, we're pretty deep into it, engineering and due diligence on it before that was, you know, just not deemed as viable. I think some financing fell through with some of the, the, the money that was going to be part of the apartments, that the demographic they were going to try and reach. So it was, that, some of that fell through and, you know, now it's, this is the, this is another, this is the, you know, kind of a last ditch attempt to try and keep this project alive. This is, I know, I know this is a, it's a, it's a lot to ask. It doesn't really meet the burden as a hardship as Glen County zoning has it stated, but it is a significant burden. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, it, all of these, these projects are pretty tight, but this one is extremely tight. This has got to the point where it's, you know, this is, this is our last ditch hope, the best effort that we can come up with right now to try and make this thing work, you know? And I think that this is an area that's growing. My house is just north of there and we, I'd love to see some development in there. It is barren from, from the Wind Dixie all the way on to where my house is past 99. So it's, you know, it's an area that's prime for development. They own this property, they're ready to do the work and I say, let's let them do the work.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, you know, I'm not, not one to just arbitrarily approve everything, you don't have to weigh everything individually. And I get that the hardship here is a financial one, but it is a substantial one. And then I also have to look at, because I'm, I'm pro-development, especially in that area, because there is nothing out there. So I'm starting looking at, okay, 186 units, that's, you know, a pretty big chunk to the tax base for Glen County. Now we've got 186 people that are going to live there, that are going to have, using services that can potentially grow other things, so.
And activity breeds activity. Maybe some other stuff could, you know, start getting kicked off here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for us.
Sure.
When a variance, if a variance is approved, is a variance approved for the project or is a variance approved for the property? When we, if we were to give a variance here?
What's the difference?
Say a thing. I'm assuming you're asking if they decided to move this project to another piece of property? It's my understanding, I think the variance would be specific to this physical location.
Right. The variance is to the property.
This physical location.
So if this developer went away and someone else wanted to do the same thing, yes, this variance would still be valid.
The variance would still be there?
Yes.
Wait a minute. If, if they decide to sell the property, they could sell the variance with it?
Basic, oh, the variance would still be there.
So from now on, if we reapprove it, from now on, the setbacks on there would be 12-foot instead of 15?
Correct. Yes.
For, for this specific type of development?
Just for that parcel, yeah.
Yeah.
For that particular property?
Right.
You know, for this property, not this type of development.
Right.
See, that's, that's...
Okay, yeah, that's...
That's what I was trying to get to.
All right, so just if, so just hypothetically, they decided to sell the property, somebody else decided to come in and build, of course, I don't know, I guess, if they built something different, then it would have different setback requirements.
Because multifamily, they have 12-foot. If they decided to make it townhomes, then it'd be seven-foot.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it'd be dependent on what they want to build. Their MR allows for quite a few different things, single-family, multifamily, townhome. So, yeah, it would be dependent on, but if they wanted to do a similar configuration to this, yes, the variance would still be in place.
So could we, could we stipulate that we, we allow the variance as long as it is for this project and this project only?
I think you could, yes.
Okay. Right. Yeah. If the, if the, these owners sold it to another owner and still did this, we'd be okay with that. But if they changed the, the project in any way, the variance goes out the window. Is that, is that feasible? Am I asking a crazy question here?
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know if I could answer what you're asking.
I mean, we, we can give variances with, with conditions.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if that can be, I know that's a heavy condition, I'm just wondering if it's a legal condition that we can do that.
Sure. Yeah, well, yes. Stephanie suggests that you tie it to their approved MPC site plan. So if you want to tie it to that approved project?
Yeah, I guess that would accomplish it because if they did sell the property, it'd have to go back through MPC again anyway, correct? Under a new owner?
Oh, no. So if they, if they do sell it, as long as they're doing the same project as, the site plan was approved, they can, I mean, they can still do that. So the change would happen if they sold it to a new owner and the owner significantly changed the design that triggered a new site plan.
Then it would have to go back through you guys, which would kind of loop back through us if it got to that point, so.
But site plans are only good for two years, so, I mean, that time may pass anyway before a new developer comes around.
Gotcha. See, I think it's almost a good point.
Yeah, they, yeah, they can be modified. Yeah, there's a few criteria.
Very minimal modifications to the, before we have to go back to site plan.
Right. So if you want to tie this to the site plan, I think that would probably be iron and cloud.
Okay.
And commissioners, I think it affects, it wasn't six-foot wooden fence, but they're, they're open to, that you have other suggestions as far as the condition that would make it more...
Let me ask you one more thing.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be, would it be of any benefit if we gave you the three-foot on one side, on the county side and left the 15-foot on the other side?
Um, maybe, I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm saying...
On the county side, on the, next to the Glen County annex, let that come in three-foot closer?
No, it'd have to be, give you 12-foot on that side and put 15-foot back on the other side.
Um, I kind of, I think that it's needed on both sides just because of the, how it's laid out and configured. I think that that's the, I think it's going to be needed on both sides, just for the, the amount, it's the, it's the...
Six extra feet.
It's on, yes, sir. And six feet don't seem like a lot, but you know, when it, when you're, when you have to meet the setbacks and the buffers and the right-of-ways and the road width and the common area and the square footage for the lot, then, you know, it, it, it does. We've done several iterations. This is, I think this is as tight as we can get it without losing any, any additional units. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't mind other people carrying the water because that's exactly where I was going towards, but I'm not sure that I, did we come to any kind of understanding of the variance with the property or variance with the project or is that immaterial to everyone or?
Well, I think if we give a variance, it would, it would kind of go with the project and the property. Only this property and only this project. Is that what you mean?
Well, no, I guess, and maybe it's, and maybe it doesn't matter, I'm just wondering that all of a sudden this piece of property, if they decided to fold their tent and sell the property, someone else comes in and part of the selling price, so, part of the, the selling conversation is that, hey, you don't have to deal with this setback situation. We already have a variance for you. That, that kind of sweetens the pot a little bit, or maybe it doesn't. I'm not a builder.
Right. Oh, yeah. I see what you're saying.
But my concern is from, from what I feel is our job, is that's what I'm trying to, that's what I was trying to get to. And I don't know, I thought we were going in that direction. That's why I let other people speak for me.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm talking about. That is my...
Sounds like to me, we could put a condition on there that's relative only to this piece of, this project on this piece of property.
And not the property.
Right.
Exactly. That's, that was my question, because like I said, I feel it entices a resale if they choose not to go forward with either of these projects.
There's a more usable property, yes.
Yes, sir. That was my, that was my question on it.
Yes. But we could tie, we could put conditions on the, on the variance suggesting that it's only tied to this project and not any other project. Is that correct? That's what we decided, wasn't it?
Right. So your, yeah, so your condition would be tied to both the property and this particular project?
Project. Yeah, that answer your question?
Yeah, but he just said, did you say the property and the project? Right, no, that's not what I'm talking about, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about you fold your tent, and then you come to me, you come to, you come to me and my, my group and you say, hey, I know that you, you before us wanted this property, and guess what, now we have a variance, so now you don't have to deal with the 15-foot deal or whatever deal, now you've got a variance already set for you, so that kind of makes it a little more enticing to what you wanted to do. And that's what I'm trying to get to here. Right, but that's for us to say, that's what I wanna hear from us, is that the variance just goes with this project. Right.
So, we, so we just make that a condition...
This project on this property.
We make that a condition of this variance, that is, that somebody else cannot come in here and do this project. Not without going through the whole process again.
Yeah, I don't know if the terminology, but I, I think if I can understand what the concern might be, is, um, you know, if this, if the site plan does expire in two years because they don't move forward, you know, 10 years down the road, someone shows up and says, hey, basically, this, this property is grandfathered in, no matter what I wanna do, I can meet this, you know, I can have a reduced setback, or, you know, 80 years from now, you know, these, these units are demolished, is the new building that comes in all of a sudden gonna have the setback, so I think, I think if the terminology is that it's only, the variance is only valid in conjunction with, um, S.P., whatever the S.P. number is, and so that it just, it stays with the site plan, it doesn't have any validity if it's not associated with this particular site plan, so that might, that might help and get away from the term property, just if you're worried about kind of grandfathering in this property to have a reduced setback, you know, forevermore, if that's a concern.
You, you just clarified it, thank you. Mike, you okay with that?
I'm not sure I heard everything quite, can you, can you restate it for me?
Probably not. It'll be...
It's tied, it's not tied to the property, it's tied to the project. Project goes away and it comes back, there's no variance on that property.
Correct.
Bam, thank you. Okay, thank you for explaining, I didn't hear everything, thank you, okay, that's where I sit. As you know.
Somebody say something to me?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve with conditions, and the condition being that the variance remain with this project.
Which is... Right, that site plan was S.P. 4606.
Correct, yes.
I'll second it.
I'll second, all of them in favor? All of, all of those not in favor? I'm in favor, I guess. Clear, okay, you got your variance. All right, thank you. Means with that number is on the... With that site plan? Yeah, stay, stays with the site plan, not the property, okay. All right, no other business, I will adjourn this meeting in the B.O.A.